Buddy, tonight is Tuesday, May 7th, 2019. It's eight o'clock. We're in room 206 at Town Hall, and this is the Planning and Zoning Commission of Darien, Connecticut. So we're going to start with continuing two public hearings. And Kevin, if you could just read the titles of those, that'd be awesome.
All right. Numbers one and two continuing for public hearing regarding site plan application number 304, landfilling or grading application number 450, town of Darien, Diller property, Nutmeg Lane. Number two, continuation of public hearing regarding site plan application number 273E, flood damage prevention application number 354A, landfilling or grading application number 53F, town of Darien, Darien High School, AD High School Lane.
Awesome. So before I hand it off to Jeremy, just want to make a couple of things clear. This application is actually two applications spanning two different properties, town-owned properties, require administrative site plan reviews for minor regrading at both sites, Diller and Darien High School, as well as a review for the path construction in a flood zone on parts of the Darien High School property. Please understand, this is not a special permit hearing. Therefore, besides a quick overview from the applicant, we'll not be talking about the planned activities on the two sites. These are dedicated parkland and a school, and since they are both deemed as their uses are as of right within a residential zone based on our zoning regs. The town has a right to develop its properties as it desires within the constraints of our zoning regs, just like any private property owner has its rights to modify their properties in the proper constraints. This also means that this commission can't consider comments about parking, traffic, speeding, garbage, noise, debris, encroachment, and/or privacy. I think my peer on the EPC offered significant latitude during the public comment over their three hearings. We have a limited scope of our jurisdiction for this application. So I'm going to remind people to keep their comments on point to regrading and the potential impacts of developing within a flood zone. I would like to say our Board of Education Chair, I think I saw Tara walk in, Tara Ackman, and Parks and Rec Commission Chair Lori Bora are both here this evening, so if people have specific complaints about the properties along the lines that I just referenced, you can address their boards, their commissions, at a separate time. Also, the parking issue, as well here and as was posted on the website, was approved by the Parking Commission, which is our, I'm sorry, approved by our traffic, local traffic authority, which is our Police Commission in a separate proceeding, and that letter's on there, so if there's complaints about parking, you're more than welcome to address those to the Police Commission. I know that during certain EPC hearings, it was said that this commission was in charge of parking and other matters. That was false, and I'm sorry. It's also not the commission's role to act as an arbitrator between property owners. So again, if you have problems with garbage, traffic, noise with the high school, please address the Board of Education. The Board of Education actually has two public comments at each of their hearings. So with that said, I'd love to see Mr. Canis. Well, Jeremy, you have anything to say?
No, I want to acknowledge there's a number of letters the commission's received. I had email and hard copy, I left one on the table, which just came in earlier today. I emailed the letter from the neighbors on Nutmeg earlier today, so you have those already, and previous letters that were submitted in.
So Mr. Canis, if you could give us an overview, just so we have an understanding of the project, but specifically point to the areas of the flood zone impacts and the regrading on each of the properties, okay?
Okay, absolutely. Good evening. For the record, my name's Joseph Canis. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I am also a certified floodplain manager by the Association of State Floodplain Managers. I'm a principal engineer at Tyon Bond, and we were retained by the Darien Athletic Foundation to prepare the design of the proposed cross-country path around the high school property. And the goal list was really to get the students off the road and also to be able to host one competition a year. Just a little bit of background, we coordinate with the Board of Ed Superintendent, the athletic director, and the coaches over a couple of year period to produce this design, and then we had a pre-application meeting with PNC staff as well as the senior environmental officer. So the flood, there is a floodplain on the high school property, which is associated with Stony Brook, and you'll see this dashed red line. That represents the effective 1% chance for 100-year floodplain boundary. So we are constructing a part of the path in that boundary, but we are not going to impact it, and the reason for that is we are not changing the grade in there. We're not reducing the floodplain storage or conveyance, so we will have no impact on the floodplain on the high school property. There is no floodplain on the Diller property. In terms of landfilling or grading, I'll just quickly walk through the route, and I'll point out where we anticipate doing some grading. And there's two routes. There's a competition route, and there's a practice route. The competition route begins at the stadium east field, crosses the field, goes diagonally across the varsity baseball field, and then across the top of the berm, and then crosses high school lane, and then goes on the south side of the ring road, which is south of the athletic fields. In that location, because of the slope there, we are going to do a little bit of earthwork. We're going to bench that path into that slope, and we're going to do, and it'll be a plus-minus situation, so we're going to fill the lower part of the slope and cut on the upper part of the slope to minimize the amount of earthwork that's, material that's exported from the site. We've crossed Neuroton Avenue onto the Diller property, and that is going to be crushed stone path. It's going to be set at grade. We're going to do some excavation to set that crushed stone depth, but there will be no earth changes, except at the two water course crossings. We need to add the culvert as part of the EPC process. So we're adding some crushed stone there to quickly get up and over those watercourses. We come out of the Nutmeg Lane sidewalk, cross Nutmeg Lane, the west parking lot here. We do have to remove two trees on the high school property. And then we run the path along the edge of the lawn, and then into the woods, behind the tennis courts, and then through the depression here, up the hill, and then along the tree line, returning to stadium east. There is also the practice route, which runs along the outside of the fences on the east side of the property, and that's the part that's in the floodplain, but like I said, there'd be no impact as a result of that. In general, the path is about five feet wide. Total length on both properties is 6,070 feet, 5,050 feet on high school property, so they would need to do three loops to achieve a 5K. Also, on Diller property, we do have, because Diller property is not a Board of Ed property, it's Parks and Rec property, and what we did was, in meeting with Parks and Rec, was added an eastern leg, which will be a plank boardwalk that sits actually above the wetland. You know, you have a couple of sleepers every eight feet or so to get above the wetland soil, just a very informal path. And the purpose of that was because for residents to be able to use this property and be able to complete a loop without entering the high school property, which might be unavailable during the day. We're proposing six parking spaces, parallel parking spaces on Nutmeg, which I can show you in a large bit.
And while you're, yeah, after the parking, if you could maybe just show where the areas of regrading are on the blowout, that'd be awesome.
Okay, sure. Parking's over here, six spaces, and it was located to try to get as much separation as we can from the watercourse on the eastern end of the property. And in terms of regrading on the Diller property, there isn't much. It's only for the two culvert crossings here. Everything else, we're going to excavate, you know, six inches or so to be able to lay the crushed stone, but the final grade will be the same as what it is now.
Just stop there one sec. Jeremy, what's the threshold for regrading applications that we even have to see them?
Six inches or 20 cubic yards.
Okay.
And we're definitely less than that.
Oh, okay. On Diller?
On Diller, on Diller, that's correct. Okay. And so on both properties, there's going to be some minor tree trimming, brush clearing, and I mentioned the two trees that we have to lose on the high school property. I already discussed the floodplain. Again, the intent is to place the paths as flush as possible, the existing grade where we can, and the nice thing about this is because it is a path, it's, you know, fairly informal, we can adjust it in the field to get around trees as needed.
So during the EPC hearings, I think you testified that, you know, basically no trees are being removed, or I should say of significant size?
No, well, we would be removing no trees on the Diller property.
Okay.
Right, because we didn't have a hearing for the high school.
Oh, that's right.
Right.
Thank you.
And the Planning and Zoning Commission has a report that's filed from the EPC.
Okay.
With their findings. So that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Any questions?
Some of us were out there this morning, and as the, as the trail, the proposed trail goes, I guess that's north, if that's, I guess, up that way.
Yeah, north is.
It's, it's, some of it's very wet.
Yes.
Will your crushed stone, whatever, alleviate that or allow them to run through the wet? Or are they going to just run through the wet? I mean, how does it work?
And that concern was brought up at EPC, and what you see here, actually, is we did make some adjustments in the path to try to move it to higher ground. You can see here in pink, that was the original path location. What we did is we actually pushed it outside the wetland, and we do have, we do have two culvert crossings, 18-inch culverts, but buried nine inches under the ground, so it's basically, I'd say 15-inch rise to be able to get up and over those watercourses that flow through there. So we did account for those wet areas.
We were following the new trail.
No, I think we were following, but what is, the most recent revision includes those two culverts. That's correct. Which will allow you to avoid getting wet. That's correct. Because you're going to run on top of the culvert. You're going to run on top.
Just to confirm, the two trees you're taking out are kind of those Christmas trees at the beginning of the parking lot?
That's correct.
Do you have that too?
I'm sorry, is that on, that's on Diller?
Those two trees are on the, on the high school property. Just to clarify. You're going to remove invasives on the Diller property? That, that's correct. Some plant materials and other rust coming out? Right, as one of our conditions of approval, and anybody that's been out there, you can see that there is a lot of different invasive species out there. There's Asian bittersweet, for example, is one of them out there, and as part of this project, we will be removing those invasives, and we've also prepared a planting plan, or at least a planting list.
Do you know if Parks and Rec or someone's going to pay to take that, you know, neighborhood brush that's there out of the way? Is that going to go, or are you going to leave?
We haven't made any specific plans for that, but if it, you know, it's considered invasive, we can.
It's all dead, I mean, so you.
Right.
Cut it down and throw it in?
Right, yeah.
Multiple people.
Yeah, I mean, there's Christmas trees, there's brush, there's leaves.
On both sides of the property, north side and the south side, actually, so. I couldn't walk the path because there's so much debris.
There is debris back there, you know, there's also fallen trees, there's, yeah, and, you know.
Unnatural, I should say.
Right, yeah. With fallen trees, you know, you can always just take a saw to either side.
Don't just let it trust us.
And lays it out.
Exactly.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Public officials, Lori, do you have any comments you'd like to say on behalf of the Parks and Rec Commission on your own? Thank you very much.
I'd really like just to say that, I'm sorry, Lorraine Bora, I'm the chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. B is in boy, O R A.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming tonight.
You're most welcome. Really, one of the things I was going to point out, as you just mentioned, the Diller property has sat unused, and there's been absolutely no maintenance to date. It's basically unusable, as you point out. It's turned into a dumping ground. This is an opportunity for the Parks and Recreation Commission, with the support of the Athletic Foundation, to improve a property that we've not frankly had the funding to do anything with, so it's a very appealing project to us for that reason alone. The project provides the opportunity for all of the townspeople to have access to another one of our town parks, which is important to us as a commission to make as many of our properties as possible accessible to the townspeople in all kinds of varying uses. And we feel this is an opportunity to do so with really minimal impact and noise, as a very low-impact use in our view. It's also been noted that invasive species will be removed, wetlands will be mitigated or taken care of, so I think we're actually going to be benefiting the property from the state of disrepair that it's in. The proposed project is completely consistent with the recently completed master parks plan. As you know, there was a lot of work done to develop a comprehensive plan, and one of the high priority items that was identified by the townspeople was to expand walking path and trail connectivity by exploring options to construct accessible multi-use trails in select parks. So this fits very nicely with that high priority item, and is consistent with the specific Diller Park plan, which was rated as moderate priority. And I would say part of that priority was just really looking at in terms of all of the needs we have in the town, and frankly, the funding that we would have available to do things. So as I said, it'll provide access to the townspeople to the Diller property, which has really gone to waste. It was purchased by the town for half a million dollars, so we have a town asset that we're getting no benefit from, whatever.
Let me just stop you there. We actually, I got a call, Susan Cameron had the file from, I don't know, what year was that?
Yeah.
Back in the 80s?
Yeah.
And we posted some of the history on the website, just for general information purposes.
Great.
It was interesting, there was a bit of a debate on the uses of the property, but I think the final conclusion was use it for passive recreation by the RTM at that time.
Right, so this is very consistent with that, and we just really feel that this would support the health and well-being of the community at large. A lot of our parks are really not in that part of town. It's not offering a lot to the townspeople, but again, it is a place that people could go who like to run or exercise and get them off the roads. So, you know, really for those reasons, the commission does really support this project. We're very enthusiastic about it. That's certainly all I had.
Thank you. Any questions from this board?
I'm going to ask.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, but just relative to funding, we don't really get into, are you spending your money to clean it, or is it the Athletic Foundation to clean it?
For this project?
Yes.
It's coming from the Athletic Foundation.
So it's not any taxpayer money either?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, it's Mary Genov's gift.
Will residents be able to use the cross-country track in the Diller property? I mean, is it suitable for walking?
Should be. It's crushed stone, you might not be able to push a stroller on it or whatever, but yeah, for walking and running, absolutely.
Somebody wants to walk around.
Yes, so the 1,440-seat feet trail would be available to the public during the day when the part of the project on the high school property would not be.
And just to make the record clear, it was Parks and Rec that required, asked that parking be added for the public. Is that true?
It was in the parks master plan, which was prior to the Athletic Foundation approaching us, with the thinking if you want to make a park accessible to people, you should provide them with some level of parking.
Okay, thanks.
The use of that path is essentially, would be the use of any of the, any of the other amenities, like the tennis courts. I go and I run on the track every once in a while. Right, it would be open essentially to the same kind of use.
On Diller?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Would dogs be permitted?
The commission has not discussed that yet.
Go ahead.
You just said something a second ago, and I want to make sure we're on the same page. When we did the walking path at Ox Ridge, it was designed with crushed stone for handicap accessibility and jogging paths? I mean, I'm sorry, and strollers?
Or, Mr. Canis, can you maybe address like the stone and whether or not you think it would be suitable for a wheelchair or something like that? I know the Police Commission approved a handicap spot.
It's partially being used and designed, I think, for the cross-country team, so I just don't know if it's dangerous.
Further, again, for the record, Joseph Canis, there, there is no formal regulation on ADA access. There are guidelines, and they do permit crushed stone provided it's, you know, not steeper than a certain percentage. And obviously, on the Diller property, it's really flat through there. There's some ups and downs, but overall, it's, the ADA regulations are much looser for trails than they are for sidewalks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
And when do you anticipate beginning this project if approved?
We have a series of approvals we have to go through up until, including acceptance of the gift by the RTM. I think that's slated for mid, early to mid-June.
It's also back to Board of Education.
And then back, yeah. So there's a whole series of meetings.
If you just repeat what Jen just said to you, just for the record, and back to the Board of.
She said it also has to go back to Board of Education. There's a long list of 10 or 12 different meetings that still have to be in bodies that this has to go through to finish, so it would be sometime thereafter. My understanding is that the foundation has the funding to do this, so then it would just be going out for the bids and, you know, the normal amount of time that it takes to get these things, you know, bid out and scheduled.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else? Ms. Ackman, do you want to have any words on behalf of Board of Ed?
No, we're just listening this evening, thank you.
All right, so Mrs. Ackman said they're just listening this evening, but everybody saw her, that's a neighbor that had sent in complaints, so if you'd like to address some of those complaints, that's the perfect person about Darien High School.
Thank you.
So along the lines that I laid out earlier, we're talking about regrading, we're talking about flood zone impacts. I can't tell you what you can't talk about, but I'll try to redirect you if you wish to speak. Anybody from the public to speak?
Paul Michalski, M I C H A L S K I, 371 Middlesex Road. I think the path is great in favor of the path. I would just ask the commission to condition the approval to ensure that the screening that was set up for neighbors and discussed at length for lights is not disturbed and is in damage in the process that all of the Board of Education put in is remain intact. The wetlands are getting thinner and thinner as trees fall, so.
The existing, the existing screening?
Yeah, the screening that the Board of Ed put up and the trees that are kind of there, that they not, I know the application said that they would try not to take trees down, and I would ask that they actually not take.
I will, I will just comment, anything that was approved by the original site plan for the lights, we can do that. There were additional items added that were not purview of this commission. I see Jeremy not, I see anybody who went through that, we understand. There are a number of trees that were added after the fact that were not part of the site plan, and we can't, we can't comment on those.
But you, can I presume, comment on not taking trees down?
I'm not sure about that. Only the site plan, that was associated.
I think the representations made where they're taking down two on the high school property, which are the other end from your property.
And those are the only two trees coming down.
Now, if trees dead-dying, diseased, that's typical, which you're aware of.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Anybody else from the public?
Mr. Gentleman, back here.
I'm sorry, I can't see behind the board, so come on up, Mr. Miller.
Scott Miller, M I L L E R. I live at 358 Hollitree Ridge Road. I guess, you know, you've addressed the two trees that are coming down. I emailed you all, I think I, you know, my main concern is retaining the existing screening and/or shifting the trail to retain the existing screening. You know, as it stands now, we have an awful lot of, you know, trespassers that come into the woods as it is. I'm sure with the addition of the trail that that will increase. You know, I honestly don't see why the trail couldn't be shifted to the edge of the playing fields as opposed to luring people into the woods. You guys said you walked by today. I'm sure you see the notation. There's no setbacks identified on the plan, so it's really hard for me to tell how much of an impact it might have on me and my property, but like the prior speaker, generally, I'm in favor of the running trail. I think it's a great amenity for the town. I would just like to see, you know, either screening or setbacks provided for the neighbors along the trail.
I'll definitely ask Mr. Canis about the setbacks as I pull my pen out.
Which, can you tell from this map which area your property bucks?
Joe, can you flip the map around?
It's just the Diller one.
Oh, sorry, yeah, that's Diller. It's not going to help them.
So I would also add that some practical aspects to this.
So Scott, if you could just point out where your house is.
So.
It's going to be on the left-hand side, kind of chewed down.
Yeah, Nutmeg is like right.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, so you can kind of see that there's these jogs, this is, this is my property here, there's these jogs, which, again, practically speaking, for a cross-country tail, I don't think is the way it's going to actually work, right? People are going to straighten it, you know, for the purpose of speed, et cetera, and, you know, I think that there's a way for it to meander along the edge of the grass there that would eliminate the need to remove trees in the wetlands, eliminate the need to impact the wetlands, and still provide a nice amenity for the school and the neighbors.
Okay, so I'll have Mr. Canis come up and talk about that.
Great.
I'm going to wait till the end. Go ahead.
You mentioned trespassers. Where are they?
They come from the high school, so.
Where, where are they trespassing?
Onto my property.
Oh, okay.
And, and, you know, it includes trash, et cetera, but, you know, my main concern is, is that this is, this is going to be a used public amenity, and I'm not doubting that, and, you know, someone mentioned dogs, and I'm sure dogs will be on it whether you, whether you approve it or not, and, you know, to skip across into my backyard is not going to be hard for them to do, and it's already happened. So again, this is part of the pluses and minuses of being a high school neighbor, but I would like to preserve the buffer as it stands as opposed to creating an opportunity for the public to be right on my back property line.
Can I ask you a question? Is there a water course that goes between the high school parking lot and your backyard?
So the, yes, there is, and it is basically the border of my property, and the high school is that water course. So to your point, you know, I'm renovating my house right now, I have to be 50 feet back from it. This is originally drawn, was right next to the water course.
But my, well, yes, but my, my question is that people that come to your backyard, they jump over that water course?
They do, yeah. We've had them in there, kids in particular, but there was a point in time when the high school located the porta potty right next to my backyard, and people would, you know, not want to stand in line, and they'd just come in my backyard and urinate. Hence, it got moved, so.
That's why it's in the middle of everyone to see now.
It's better.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? And then I'll have Mr. Canis come up. I can't see behind the board.
No, nobody there. No hands up.
I thought you said the public couldn't speak on this, is that right? Or can we?
I'm sorry, could, could you introduce yourself?
Let me, let me restate what I said. You're more than welcome to speak on regrading and flood zone impacts. We aren't talking about parking, we're not talking about traffic, garbage, this is not the, the, this commission doesn't have jurisdiction on any of that. It's not a special use permit. And again, I think a couple of things were said during the EPC hearings, and the breadth of discussion went well beyond EPC's jurisdiction. We don't run our meetings so loosely because we have a really packed agenda, so we got to stick to the points on it. So you are allowed to, I just want to make it clear, you're allowed to come up and say anything, I just am asking for your respect to what our jurisdiction is.
I appreciate that, and we were misinformed, we thought this was the next.
Yeah, if you could just come up now for the record, I'm sorry.
I'm at six Nutmeg Lane, so I'm right across from new parking in our front yard, basically. And that's my main concern.
And so.
Could I have your name for the record?
Dean Hatfield.
Thank you so much.
I did prepare letters for you.
You, please submit them.
I might be the wrong.
No, it's okay.
I think I have enough.
And let me, and just point out your, your house, it's actually on Nutmeg. Jeremy, if you wouldn't mind, do it on the master site.
Oh, this is the Diller property, yes. Exactly, right, right, basically, right. Our front yard will be six parking spaces for a quarter of a mile, basically.
Across the street, correct?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Which one is it? The first house or the second house from the high school?
We're the second house.
So just to be clear, you know, parking on streets is purview of the Police Commission, and they don't have to conduct a public hearing to install that. There's three members of the Police Commission if you wish to reach out to and talk to you about your concerns. We posted the Police Commission letter. Captain Anderson posted it, it's on our website, so you can reach out to them and discuss your concerns with the parking.
Basically, it's going to be all juniors parking there, or anybody who's late from school, they're going to park there.
It's going to be a drop-off zone, so you don't have to go through the whole circle. You know, it's not going to be for the public, especially since the use of this property is going to be during the winter, and that's the main reason they wanted the parking is because you couldn't park in the high school. But if it's during the winter, you already saw today where spring, it's very wet, you're really not going to get much use, yet you're going to put six parking spaces there.
Again, these are all decisions that are outside of this Commission, the use of the property.
So it's the Police Commission is who I need to talk to?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And the letter, again, is on the PNC website, you can pull it down, I put it up there for informational purposes, put it in the file, but again, that's not, nothing we're associated within this application.
I suggest to make it like two-hour parking.
Yeah, and that's addressed in the letter, too.
But then you still have to monitor it, and, you know, I hate to waste police resources monitoring a parking lot for a quarter of an hour, it's like, you know, driving across town to go one mile or one lap around the high school.
Again, that's a policy decision beyond this, this Commission.
I'm trying to be efficient, but I hear you.
I got two parking tickets already this year from the high school.
Oh, sorry.
Seventy-five bucks a shot.
Sorry, I'm, just because I'm looking at your letter, and I understand that this is not necessarily for us, but what, there was a car accident in that area, but that's when it was.
I've actually had two cars crash through, because the street has a little S.
Right.
And so during the winter, people go too quick, and they don't realize there's actually an S, and it's right where the parking's going to start. And so all you need is a, I mean, it's bad enough with the S, and it gets icy, that they slide, and then they go straight into our yard. But if you add somebody that's coming out of that parking, and they avoid it, try to avoid it, then it's almost going to, we're going to have even more accidents is what I envision.
All right.
So I guess, again, the Police Commissioner?
There's three Police Commissioners.
Do I just go to the Police Department, is that what you're saying?
They're on the website, if you look them up, they all have email addresses, and you can.
Yeah, you send a letter, you can send a letter to the Police Commission or the local traffic authority, and as they work through whatever signage there's going to be.
Regulation.
Regulations, they regulate speeds in town, speed signs.
Speed bumps.
Speed bumps. They regulate the striping, et cetera, so that's.
We're already a twenty-five mile per hour street, and nobody.
I live on one, too.
Young kids don't adhere to that, so.
All right.
But obviously, we do have some concern with the water, the water level has gone up. I know, I did put it in this letter, I did put it before the EPC meeting, that basically I go out and shovel that drain that's across the street on the Diller property every winter, because I know nobody else is going to do it, and it's going to flood, and it has flooded the first year we moved there. It, the water does flow to, basically, between our property and eight, and I've been here eighteen years, and it has grown every single year. So this is probably one of the worst years. Some of it may be because of the weather, but.
Just a bit.
But still, it's, it keeps growing. So my concern is, is keeping that water flow where it doesn't get worse. So I don't know, you know, if they're going to remove boulders to get the trail in, that's going to be an issue, is that not you?
That's EPC. The flood zone review was on Darian High School property, that's not considered a flood zone.
Okay.
We're just looking at regrading and making sure the regrading doesn't negatively impact the properties. Where the regrading is, it's in the middle of the site, the whole site slopes from southwest to northeast, towards that culvert, which was built around the high school, and then, actually, the whole, all that water eventually makes its way around the north side of the high school, and then back down on the, what's that, east side of the high school, right behind Mr. Michalski's house. So again, Diller, we're only making sure those tiny little regradings weren't impacting anything.
Thank you for your time anyways.
But Parks and Rec would be the one that would start taking care of that.
Yes.
Right, so that becomes the Parks and Rec situation, so you will no longer be.
Right, the catch basin would be at Public Works, so certainly.
It is a design catch, where the screen's over metal, yeah. It's designed for a drainage, storm drain.
Yep.
But it's filled up with dirt all the way to the top.
There's a great, I just filed a work order with the Public Works Department, it's an awesome website, so feel free to log that in.
You go right on the town website, it's called Q Alert, and just type in whatever the situation is, and then when they come in in the morning, they just start.
Clearing it up.
Some shoveling, all right, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Canis, if you could just come up and address Mr. Miller's concerns, just with the jog, and, you know, reiterate that whether or not vegetation's coming down in that area.
Okay, again, for the record, Joseph Canis, I know there was a question asked about setback. So just bear with me a moment while I break out my scale here and measure.
I love when you do this.
Of course, it's a hundred scale, so it makes it a lot tougher.
It's so precise.
Jeremy, do we have any setbacks with regards to trails?
No, this is, it's a good question. It's not a structure.
Correct.
So there would be no setbacks for such a walking path or trail, so they can be right up to the property line. And as you can see, I'll call it on the south side, between the bottom of the oval and Holly Lane, I think Joe and I talked, it's in the range of five to twenty feet off that back of the Holly Lane properties generally?
Well, at this, at this very narrowest point here, where it heads towards the Diller property, it's, it's actually, there's a little bit more setback than that. It's about, I'd say, call it twenty-two feet or so. And that, and that's the closest it gets to those Holly Lane properties that border Diller, and then it starts to diverge. But to Mr. Miller's question, who lives up here in Hollow Tree, who borders the west property line of the high school, the closest that trail gets is twenty-five feet. Now that said, with the vegetation, you know, there is space between the trees, so we can wind that path through there. And obviously, we want to try to keep it towards the high school side as opposed to pushing it closer to the stream, because as you move up that slope there, it is drier.
Wait a second. It's twenty, it's twenty-five feet from Mr. Miller's border? Wasn't he, that wasn't not the one that you crossed his property and you rerouted it around his property?
Right, that's, that, exactly. We, and this is actually the older plan, but we did, we were nicking a corner here, right? And so we did revise that path, you'll see those revised plans, and we're twenty to twenty-five feet away.
So we nicked it and you moved it twenty-five, you moved it twenty-five?
Right, we moved it inside the property line, right.
Any other questions? Jeremy, you're fine.
Can I follow up?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, let me just, yes, you will, I promise. Thanks for standing up, because I can't see you.
I think we're just confirming which property is Mr. Miller's property, and making sure that Joe Gates will be accurate answer.
Yeah. I'm going to check with them. Those things are safe. Great, great. Testimony said.
It appears in the southeast corner of Mr. Miller's property. We'll just point to that, right there, to the left, right in there. As the, as the trail goes northbound, it gets to about eight to ten feet of Mr. Miller's property, and then as it turns the corner around his property, it's about eight to ten feet. And then as you go further north, then it gets to be twenty, and then twenty, and then thirty. Okay, that's fine. But at its closest point, let's call it eight to ten feet, is right around that southeast corner of Mr. Miller's property.
It's an interesting property line, actually, as I was just saying.
Can we just make sure we're correct on the south side, too, because this, this is an old small plane? That looks like it's right on the hill.
Let's call it ten feet along the south property line, if you will?
Is the closest.
Wait, wait, define, are we talking Diller?
No, it's not Diller.
Oh, in Holly Lane, you mean?
Correct.
Whoa, whoa, hold it, hold it, I'm sorry. Which property line are you talking about?
South, south property line, street, across the street from the main upper oval, the center oval.
Oh, Holly Lane there, thank you.
Slide your pencil over eight feet, right there, stop.
Right there, okay.
That's closer than twenty-two feet.
It looks like, what did you say, Joe? Ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve, yep.
All right.
Closest one, about ten to twelve feet.
Let's make sure the record is correct.
Sure, and I apologize, I thought you were talking about right here on Holly, Holly Lane where you're at, the Diller.
How close you get to other vehicles, but.
On the, on Holly.
Anyways, I don't care where it is.
Now, that is a flat grassed area.
Right, yes.
So the grass will be indistinguishable, if you will. The only thing that would distinguish this is that it's flatter than the rest.
Yes.
So that's not the section that's being converted to crushed stone?
That's correct.
Because it goes grass, crystal, grass, crystal.
Right, mhm.
Okay.
Turf.
No turf.
Artificial turf, I mean, right? You're not running along at the starting gate, you're not?
No, no, the only part that's artificial turf is the competition route here.
That's right, I'm sorry, yes.
Across the center of the new baseball field.
That's right, yep, yes.
But you're not putting down any more artificial turf, are you using?
No, 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 we're not, no more artificial turf.
Lost in translation. Okay. Anybody else base another sentence? Oh, sorry, Scott, come on up.
It's really hard to tell what he was saying with the background.
So he pointed out that little corner that juts out gets, you know, where you raised concern about getting close, eight to ten feet.
There's no way that's eight to ten feet.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah.
You're a hundred percent correct.
Is it, what was your estimation?
Two to three feet.
Okay. Now, is it to the stream or the property line?
No, so it's really, I mean, I don't know if any of you guys have been out to the property, but the topography there is really tricky, right? So you've got a big swale that comes down, then it comes up.
It's a funky property line.
It's a funky property line. The tree line is, is basically the property line there, and the removal of those two trees, like, if that's the plan, are essentially the path that they would have is adjoining the property line.
Hold on, we're done, I don't think we're talking about any trees along that property.
Now, the trees, let me show you where the trees will be.
Right. Not up here.
Joe, just confirm, you see, it says remove trees in the, these two trees are exactly.
Just for the record, they're clarifying.
There are trees in this swale here as well.
So wait, there, just to be clear, there's no trees being removed by Mr. Miller's property?
That's, that's what the plan showed.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, so anyway, I guess that corner, I would, I would dispute the eight to ten feet. I guess the question I have is, is why, why doesn't the trail just follow the edge of the, the grass area? Why does it need to go through the trees?
All right, so we got something in the file over the last couple of days saying that they're trying to maximize the length, this is written by the cross-country coach. I think, do we put that letter on the website?
He's, he's also estimating that there's one event a year.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm not arguing the case, I'm giving you the testimony that was submitted, and that is the reason why it's going to the edges, because there were similar concerns submitted at EPC around the route on the Diller property, why didn't you bring it in? And that was the answer brought forth by the Athletic Foundation and the coach of the cross-country team.
Okay, you're going around three times, why can't you go three and a half?
Again, not my, not my policy decision, not ours.
I was going to ask if your property line is staked currently by a surveyor?
Probably not.
Mr. Miller, is there any, is there any on the kind of, I guess, if you're looking at this map, on the right side of your property, on the right side of your property, because it's hard, you know, when I walked, I walked down Nutmeg, and I actually took a right and kind of walked around the, that wooded area to try to follow the, I didn't, I didn't go left, frankly. Between the high school property, then there's the, the stream, and then, is there any buffer on your property before the, before the high school?
Is it just lawns?
Is it just lawn, then stream, then high school?
No, so it's, it's house, trees, stream, trees, high school, playing fields.
So.
I'm sorry, say it again.
It's wood, it's wood.
It's just wood, there's wood, you don't have like everything.
There's woodlands on both sides.
There's no fence or anything like that?
No, there's no fence.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thanks.
Yeah.
That's true. So Pete Chubb?
Yes.
Do you plan to put lanes, lanes in the corner of these spots? Do you plan to stake out the trail or probably not?
Again, for the record, Joe Canis, as part of the construction, they would need to stake that out. Yeah, it wouldn't necessarily be by a surveyor, I mean, it would be survey guided, but it would be the same thing as laying out a road. It'd be more formal than that.
But it's going to say property corner.
Oh, I, oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
You're going to put the.
The property lines, they would definitely need to be located by a surveyor. You can't hide all that.
Right, so you're going to put a lane in with the strain, it's going to mark them.
Right, exactly.
So no encroachment on anybody's.
Right, exactly.
Okay. That will be part of, that will be part of the business.
We'll stake your line.
All right, so somebody else stand up, sir?
Don Genio, Eight Nutmeg Lane, and we really can't see back there, maybe if you could clarify which trees are coming down. You made, you mentioned the letter that I submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission this afternoon, and I'll just hand out a few others.
We, he, he also passed them along.
What I wanted to talk about was the proximity of our house to the school, and there really is no buffer zone between us and the school, unfortunately, and I've been to Dan Brennan when he was the commissioner.
Please point out your house, I'm sorry.
Oh, point out, point out the house, okay. So where's Nutmeg Lane? Yeah, that's the house right here, okay.
So you have the white one at the end of this tree?
So, so we are, they, rather than planting more trees for us, and if you look at exhibit B in, in my letter, you can see our view from the den window, and we could see shining headlights and all the activity going on, rather than planting more trees for us, which they have done all around back here, they cut down trees and we have absolutely no buffer.
All right, so what I'll do is I see three members of a Board of Education here. I'll make sure they get this letter if they haven't already.
Thank you.
And I can only ask them to follow up with you and figure out a plan.
We've asked for a number of years.
Yeah, you know, I also have my frustrations sometimes, as they well know, but hopefully they won't view it as an administrative matter, and they'll take it under their hands as elected officials.
I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Anybody else?
Can I motion to adjourn?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
All in favor?
You second. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the hearing's closed, and the Commission will deliberate sometime in the future.
Thank you.
So moving on to number three, jump.
Continuation of public hearing regarding, sorry, I'm reading, this site plan application number one thirty-sixty, special permit application number two thirty-one A, landfilling and regrading application number four fifty-five, George At Work LLC, two squab lane. Sorry, you didn't have any room to move in. And folks, if, I'm sorry, but we're going to start another public hearing, if you could, if you're going to discuss something, maybe move it out to the outside of the room. We will not be deliberating this item tonight, so there's, at the very earliest, it would be next Tuesday, and that was a previous item, I'm sorry, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate your, your, your understanding.
Hi, good evening, Amy Savitakis, Ruchi Law Group, on behalf of George At Work LLC, On behalf of George at Work LLC, the proposed tenant for two Squab Lane. As was mentioned, we're back for continuation of the public hearing. There are a couple of questions that were raised at the last public hearing. You should have received some updated architectural drawings, site plan, as well as some new renderings. I thought I'd start first with the changes to the architectural, because that's a little bit easier, and then let's talk about the changes to the site, if that's okay. So as far as the architectural, main things that were changed were, one of the comments that we'd received previously was from the fire marshal about having another egress point from the top floor of the restaurant. So we've added a staircase from one balcony to the other. Also, we took to heart the idea of needing a little heat on the patio, so the fireplace goes through now to the patio as well. So that'll be a very nice city area. And that's really about it as far as the changes that were made to the architectural drawing, other than, you know, changes that were made to comply with the site plan changes. I did want to submit two additional renderings where you can really see the whole building. First and second, those are two different purposes.
Jeremy, with this two of each.
Thank you, Tucker. Yep?
So.
Hold on.
Whoa, that's some great staircase.
Yeah. So we've got some additional views for you of the, of the ramp, the staircase, and so that you can really see what this is going to look like. And we've also, you know, in compliance with some of the other questions, you moved around the handicap spacing a little bit, added some stops, that type of thing. So the biggest piece of this is this that, you know, was, we came back for was the idea of this handicap ramp between the Darien train station parking lot down to the Grove Street area. We have designed a composite wood ramp structure. And the reason for that is because there is a very nice large tree on the town property that we're trying to save. And if you look at the site plan, you can see that the ramp.
Which page is that?
Once we have the ramp sized to the width that was requested by the building official, we end up, or I'm sorry, not by building official, by Public Works, he asked for it to be a little bit wider than what the minimum is required. Once we size it to that size, you can see that the ramp itself is right next to the trunk of that tree. So if we were to put in a concrete ramp with concrete footings that go down 42 inches or so, the tree can't be saved. We are prepared to work with the town regarding maintenance and liability and coming to a full agreement with the town regarding the ramp. However, unfortunately, about, right around 4:30, we received an email from the Director of Public Works indicating that he had spoken with our first selectmen, and they both feel that concrete is more appropriate material for the ramp. I'm not really sure what their reasoning is for a concrete ramp. Unfortunately, despite the fact that I tried to set up meetings, I wasn't able to speak with them directly. So it's just this email that I got, like I said, at 4:30. There is a reason we picked composite. We're not actually, we actually think that composite may end up being more expensive than concrete. It definitely wasn't cost consideration. It's a consideration of wanting to save that tree. So I think, you know, what we're asking from you is frankly, you know, we would like to save the tree. We think it adds value to the area. This property owner has taken care of the landscaping in that area and will continue to do so, particularly if we have come to a new agreement with the town. We would like this commission to say that, well, first of all, we'd like you obviously to approve it, but we would like you to support the idea of composite and then let us go back and explain why we're working with this material to the first selectmen and the Department of Public Works.
All right, so we got an issue where I think everybody wants a ramp.
I think so.
It's required, right?
Is it required to?
No.
I quite agree.
Well, if we don't have, if we don't have the ramp, then we can put some sort of lift on the building.
Okay, so you would need, you would need something for the building per se?
Correct. But, and this is the most, this option, I think, is the most attractive and it's the best for the town. Because it gives us an access point.
Understood your opinion.
Yes.
But we're going to have to get approval from the town, not even this commission, right? Is it your opinion that ARB would have to take a look at it as well? Jeremy or?
I know the ARB has, Tucker Chase is in the first row, who's confirming that they did go to ARB on this project a couple of times.
Yeah.
So they do, you have in the record a letter from ARB supporting the project. I think at this point, much of that ramp would be on, or let's call it, half the ramp is on town property.
All right.
And I think that you get into different issues, not only the look, but, so I think in this case.
So ARB approved the building, but hasn't, clearly hasn't seen a ramp, because it's the first time the ramp's been out.
Correct.
All right.
They approved it administratively.
I'll have you come up and then we'll, or if you want to.
I think that, no, ARB has not seen this, this final design.
This is the latest and greatest?
That's the latest and greatest.
So, okay, staff, help guide me through process in terms of.
I think in this case.
Because we did ask for the ramp depiction. We're going to have our opinion, but our opinion is not all that matters here.
Right, and Amy's acknowledged that, look, for something that's going on town property, you need the approval of the town, or the whole thing can't be built like this. So I think what we need, and it was unfortunate that Jamie Stedson was away and Ed was away for different parts of that two-week interval since they've last been.
Yeah, and we rushed this, or not rushed, but tried to fit it in quickly.
So I think what we need to do is sit down with them and try to figure out the best solution to this. I spoke to Amy prior to meeting. There's a couple of different possibilities. And I think the town and Amy need to sit down and figure out the material, the location, how it's all going to work together to try to come up with something that Ed and Jamie can send a letter of support saying, yes, as this design shows, this is good with the following, as Amy mentioned, you know, agreements on liability and maintenance and things like that.
I think procedurally, though, what I was hoping that we could do, and what I think is easier, because what Jeremy's suggesting is keeping this open and continuing to talk with them, which has proven difficult. So what.
Well, it's got to happen.
Right, no, of course it has to happen. But, you know, we talked about this before, which is, you know, maybe we have to modify it if it gets changed drastically. But if this, if this commission approves of this look and, you know, as far as the site plan.
I got to stop you there, because if this was any two private property owners, we wouldn't be able to do it without approval of another property owner. We don't have that approval from the town.
Right, but you can approve it with the.
I'm not willing to do that. I'm sorry. Am I the only one?
No.
And again, I'm sorry, it's unfortunate, you will have the ability to come every meeting and you're early in the schedule, once we get this kind of set up.
I guess that's the problem, is that then, okay, then I'll accept, I will accept what the first selectman has said and we'll make it concrete.
Again, it's their property. I don't have.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, so then I'm willing to make that change. And if this.
Then you come back with a concrete design and we'll look at that?
It's going to look exactly the same.
Again, I got to.
Except the tree's going to be gone.
Again, I got to wait for the property owner to approve it, and I'm sorry.
But they have, the property owner has said, as long as it's concrete, they're in favor of it.
Do we have a letter in the record for that?
The most recent email is, what, 4:30 today? And it's concerned.
Please read it.
Based upon the revised plans received May 3rd, and this is an email from me to Ed, the comments from you and Jamie are, one, still concerned slash on the happiness with the composite ramp, concrete is strongly preferred, DPW will not support the composite material for ramp in the town right away. Two, needs to be a maintenance agreement and liability agreement filed in Darien Land Records prior to any construction of building or ramp. Three, desire for maintenance schedule to be submitted by property owner slash manager every three months to Board of Selectmen and DPW. Four, design appears to be DA compliant, parentheses, ramp is still narrow and is the bare minimum, that's Ed's comment. Five, additional details needed on landing area at bottom of stairs near parking lot, including backing out from the adjacent handicap parking space. Ed's comments, bollards are a great option.
All right, I, three of those or four of those can be conditions, I yield that, but the other stuff I can't, I can't close right now.
It doesn't say anything about the trees.
So.
You're worried about the 30.
Again, we're talking week or two, again.
But there's also many other things, so it's not like this is.
And again, I love, well, hold on, though. I think, you know, we're also talking about whether or not the applicant decides to do a ramp and/or a lift of some sort, and we might lose the opportunity to have a ramp at that area, which is not required, so.
Okay, so then we'll take the ramp off the proposal.
Yeah, okay. Again, I'm sorry, you can come up, Mr. Del Setti, and make that comment, but I, this commission cannot move forward without the town approving, especially our DPW and our first selectmen.
But if I take, if I withdraw the application for the ramp, then you can't.
I don't see a plan without the ramp.
Or with the lift.
I think the town, we've talked about this for a month, would prefer to work with the applicant on a ramp.
Okay. So.
But then the town should have told me a month ago that it had to be cement. I mean.
I'm sorry, I, that's not.
I know it's not, which is why I'm, which is why I'm saying, if this, I get, let me ask you, let me ask this a different way.
Again, this is my, this is my gripe with another body, that I don't have control over this.
I understand. But can I get from you all, I mean, first of all, I think we're just, if, we're going to take the ramp, I'm taking the ramp off right now, so I think you can approve it without the ramp. But if you're going to tell me that you can't approve it without the ramp either, then I need some indication from you all whether you think it should be cement. I mean, I think that.
I don't know enough to make that determination. I need my DPW expert to come in and give me some guidance here.
Well, then I need to ask him to be invited to the next hearing.
Yes, great, perfect.
But he hasn't made himself available.
I will, he's an ex-official member, I will make sure he's available for one of our meetings.
Can I ask quick, like, in theory, if you were to put a lift in there, where would it go?
There are a few different locations that it could go. The easiest would probably be up to the first floor balcony.
I love the idea, and I'd love to close the hearing, I just, we can't at this point.
I'm just, I'm not sure why you can't close it if I withdraw.
Because I don't have a, if you withdraw the ramp, I don't have a plan with a lift.
But I'm not sure that that would be, I mean, that's part of the interior building code.
Typically, interior, I mean, you just show me interior plans without a lift, so. But we're getting.
But there's also.
I don't understand what the reluctance is, we'll get to the other question, the reluctance is to keep this open and do this right.
I don't think it's relevant. So here, right?
I'm sorry?
It doesn't matter why the rush, right?
Well, I'm just, I just, I'm.
We just want to move on to the next stage.
The next stage is working with the town and deciding whether or not you want to put a ramp in, how it will be designed, whether or not the tree stays. If it doesn't, if you decide to put a lift in, then come back to us next week with an elevator and it's all set and done.
I think that, yes, I think that it's just, we would need to approve the finals.
We don't have any sort of documentation that the town would even approve a ramp, so how can I close a hearing without any sort of insight other than a four or five bullet point letter from the town? And if we did this with any private property owner, it would work the same way. So I apologize for the fact that over the last two weeks, there were two people on vacation, evidently, that weren't able to respond.
I mean, I tried to meet with them.
I will, I will, when's our next meeting, Jeremy?
Today is May 7th. The next meeting is May 14th, a week from today, and after that, the one next after that would be the 20th.
We can continue to put this on our, on our agenda, first on the list.
We're not scheduled to meet the 20th.
Good, I'm not here to.
Can we leave without other questions?
So that's the ramp issue. If you want to cover other issues this evening or another evening, we're more than happy to.
I don't think that there's anything else new from us, if you have any other questions for us.
Go ahead.
So I did some research, so I do have some questions, because I have, you know, I'm obviously looking out for the town plan and making sure this is in, you know, the, that we maintain character and obviously based on why we love Darien and what's in our town plan and the way that we have developed it, maintaining community character and facilities and our downtown and our population size, right? So it was, I have questions about the hours of operation. I know that that would be something we normally haven't, you know.
We don't have any.
But this is also a first, just like high school lights are, the first time we had a QSR that serves alcohol that's open until 1:00 a.m., because I've done some research with Sugar Bowl, Dutch's, and looking at hours.
Let me just stop you one sec before to verify something.
Yeah, sure.
Do we regulate hours for businesses?
The commission has in certain situations, Fred spoke with Jennifer earlier today, oftentimes there's more sensitivity, let's take the areas near the service business east zone with neighbors right behind. And the commission traditionally has been a little looser with projects right in downtown, but Jennifer did mention this.
John, we have, for sure, like when we.
No, that's what I said, go ahead.
On the corner of the Post and Tocqueville Road, that place, particularly the outside patio there.
That was, yeah. Talked about bands and such, go. Go ahead, sorry.
So I'd like a little bit, so, because that Sugar Bowl opens at 6:00. We've got Dutch's, which is, so Sugar Bowl, see that there's a waitstaff? We all love Sugar Bowl, but it opens at 6:00, right? So I'm using that as one of the bars. Dutch's is 6:30 to 10:00, and that's QSR, right? So I'm kind of trying to put something in my head together, and we're 20, like, our population is not Fairfield or New York City, so a coffee house being open and lively till 1:00 a.m., having stayed and done some research at 1020 Post this past weekend, most of 1020 Post is pretty cleared out by 11:00.
I'll go, I'll meet you at Ernie's at 2:00.
And having also been at Ernie's a few, you know, there's a population of.
Not a two for the record.
Not a two for the record. But, so I'm trying to maintain character and try to wrap my head around this, and I, I'm having a lot of difficulty understanding also.
The concept of the restaurant is.
It's the concept of the, like, a QSR of, as you said, inexpensive wine with inexpensive food, right? And I love Cafe Nero, which is affordable way, place to eat, that's very, it's QSR. I'm wrapping my head and I'm having difficulty also for what that would look like, since at 11:00 it's pretty sleepy, 11:00 to 1:00, 1:00 a.m., it's a big space, it's 46 seats plus outdoor, this could be, you know, 70 people plus.
Well, I think the reason that 1020 is quiet is not because 1020 has restrictions on the hours that they stay open, it's that that's when the restriction set by this commission on the hours that they stay open. 1020 is quiet because that's the time that they've decided that they want to close and it's the time that people leave. So I think that it's a, it's a commercial decision and a management decision. If there's not, I don't think that really they're going to be, on Tuesday night, are they going to be open at 1:00? I don't think so, because nobody's going to be there on Tuesday night at 1:00. But that is a, we're asking for the hours that they would allow, be allowed to be open so that they can work with what is commercially reasonable and what the town desires.
Yeah, I just had, I mean, Dutch's is 10:30, that's, it's the latest QSR.
So is your, so your concern would be the hours that it's open?
Yeah, yeah, because I think it changes the character of Darien.
Okay, okay, so we can discuss that at the right moment during deliberations, if we put hour restrictions on it?
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure, though, that I understand the fact that it is QSR, how that makes it different than an Ernie's or a Louie's, which don't have those hours restrictions.
Right, so Ernie's isn't serving, you know, here you're going to be serving like a Cafe Nero. Let's say that's maybe a different food selection, but Cafe Nero, so you could actually have something to eat. At Ernie's, it's a popcorn menu from midnight till whenever people are there. I wouldn't exactly say that's the same thing, because if you have a sandwich and you're drinking inexpensive wine, as it was described, until 1:00 a.m., I imagine it might attract more people than necessarily Ernie's, which is a very local crowd, which we've been to, which matters, because that changes the character of the town. And Fairfield is a 60.
So would you rather it at a bar?
Would I rather it at a bar?
We can stop serving food if that's the concern. I mean, I think that.
I'm just trying to get.
I'm saying the combination of the two is probably the demographics having such a large child, right? Our children's population is quite large. Being at 1020, there's not that many people. We already have data to support how many people will be at Ernie's, how many people are at 1020, where it's a waits, there's wait service there, right? So it's changing, I don't know, and I'd also, I'm, I think it's going to be a change for the character.
All right, so you're concerned, let me, let me just cut to the chase, you're concerned with the operations of the business and the hours, which is something which we can cover during deliberations when we get to that point.
And, and I think that I would just add to that point as, that I would prefer to see people have access to food when they have access to alcohol.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I totally agree, I'm just saying cheap, inexpensive food and inexpensive alcohol.
Well, I think that's, that's an overstatement to say, to call it cheap, I mean, it's.
I didn't say, I said inexpensive, cause that was, I was told inexpensive wine was said in the last time, is that not what you said?
It's because you won't have the, it's, it's not gonna be 1020.
But you said inexpensive wine, for the record, last time, so that's, I'm just using the same words, I didn't mean cheap, but inexpensive, it could be delicious.
All right, let's, let's just set the record at less than 1020, and, and.
Okay.
Better than cheap, all right.
Great.
Anything else?
Were there any other questions?
Any other questions?
Uh, did this parking, is what we were just discussing about, are they pulling, you know how we're avoiding on Post Road with the Corbin project to have people backing out into the road? Is this backing out right into that really narrow little road that I always cut through?
You're giving yourself up, it's not a road, it's a parking lot.
Yeah, when I need to avoid, you do it on my side of the town, to the other side of the town, I go under the Lauer Bridge, squab.
That's a parking lot, it's not a public road.
Past Fjord.
But actually, what?
That's not a road?
Damn.
It's a private citizen.
Oh, there's a stop sign.
Yeah.
So, so, I, the, um, where the parking is right now on that site.
That is a parking lot.
Well, so first of all, there is parking now, and it is actually in the line of traffic further, this is moving that, those parking spaces back.
Oh, okay, so the, the current site has grass and that would change into parking?
They're gonna cut into that slope.
Got it.
So actually what they're gonna do is make it better by giving, the park, pushing parking 10 feet, I don't know what you're saying, I'd say about 10 feet to the north, which will get people a little further off that, let's call it the Grove Street Extension.
Yeah.
Which goes.
Yeah.
And so then by cutting into that slope and pushing the parking further north, it will get people a little further off of that.
And to that point, it is important that we do stay out of that area moving forward, because, um, what, we haven't really discussed on any of these plans, but you can see on the survey and on the site plans, there's a hatched area, which is an easement for the furthest over parcel, that area has to be kept clear as a driveway, because otherwise that parcel becomes landlocked. So the furthest over parcel where Ching's Table is, is that the?
It's called STEAM.
STEAM, oh my gosh, STEAM now, sorry, wow, I'm.
Really dating myself now.
I could've called it Dulcetti's, I think. Where STEAM is, that building would be landlocked, so we do have to, it is actually a requirement that we stay clear of that easement area with, with the whole project.
Uh-huh.
You good?
Yes.
Anybody else?
Amy, just looking at, at this picture, so this, this, I'm actually stealing Liz's smart question.
I forgot.
This, this wall right here, what's the height of that wall there?
You're talking about the wall that the parking sort of goes straight into?
So if you're, if you're parking in this spot directly next to that stone staircase, right in front of you, how high is that wall?
About eight feet.
It's, it's eight feet high.
Thank you.
And that, so that's the height that you have to travel for the staircase and the height of the ramp.
So when you calculate the height of that, that ramp, it's, it's essentially that zig is doing eight feet.
Correct, and it's, there's a, there's a calculation of.
Ninety-six feet by.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't.
I know, I'm trying to get the answer.
I think it's, I think it's seven degrees.
It's 112.
Yeah.
112.
12 feet.
Ninety-six.
So you have to go, you have to travel 12 feet on the, on the ramp for every one foot of elevation.
That, oh, okay, so that's the ratio of, I got it, okay.
The grade, the grade basis.
So essentially eight times 12, okay, got it.
I have one last question today, this fancy wall here, is that the existing wall that's there now?
There's, I'm sorry, there's, I'm, I'm not seeing a wall, I'm, I'm sorry, I ate all my coffee.
Does it have, well, this wall here?
Oh, yes.
That's existing, right?
The, the wall that, that is, that's off of our lot, um, over here, yes, that's existing, and it, it shows up on that elevation.
See, which one?
This wall here, it's there today.
Yeah, okay.
So you could put a band inside that little gizmo.
And we did, the other thing we did change on the site plan, which I forgot to mention, was we extended the sidewalk, um, so that it's, you can see the connection now from this lot to the, um, to the, these two lots on Boston Post Road.
Which sidewalk?
The sidewalk, here, it sort of ends before you get onto our lot right now.
So it would be this one, this?
Further down, yeah.
Further down.
Any other questions? Anybody, yeah, I was gonna say, anybody to follow, Mr. Del Cetti? Nice cat, look at those.
That like reflexes.
Did you play baseball or something? This is amazing.
Darien.
Introduce yourself, please.
For the record, I'm very frustrated about this tree.
Say who you are first.
Oh, Dan Dulcetti, 55 North Avenue, 10 years ago, the town came along and we had to rework the, um, building, the 12,000 square foot building, because of the tree, okay? The tree is 70, 71 years old, I nurtured it as a little baby, so, it's my lovely tree, okay? And we all agreed that we wanted to save the tree, I brought Barrett Tree in, they said, "Look, you gotta be away from the roots or the tree dies," okay? So now we're here, and last minute I find out that we want a, you know, going down with a concrete, which is crazy and ridiculous to begin with, I mean, what we're putting together is a beautiful, uh, nice ramp, okay, it's composite, and I love composite, I don't know what's wrong with composite, uh, we're building a garage over 68 Centric Avenue, take a look at the garage, it's composite, it's beautiful. So I don't understand what's going on, or why this was, was made.
I was just gonna suggest that possibly, cause I don't know, you'll, we'll have to deal with the town, right, but maybe there's a way to make the, all the rest of it and then just the section by the tree be composite, so that it doesn't damage, cause I, I mean, I absolutely support you for trying to save a beautiful tree.
So, you know, I'm so frustrated now, I'd say, we'll do the concrete and the tree dies, so that's our decision tree, I said to everybody, let's, let's do the concrete, and let's just cut it and let's go away, cause I'm frustrated.
Or do a lift, and again, that would be a shame if the town can't work with you in order to create a handicapped accessible connection between the public parking lot and the base level of the building.
We thought.
And so I am sorry, again, I apologize, it's out of our control, but, again, you have my commitment that any, we will continue to put this on every one of our meetings and continue this, okay? Just, and I'll send a email to Ms. Stevenson and Ed and say, "Let's get this figured out."
Yeah, let's figure it out, because, you know, you spent a lot of money trying to save the tree.
Yeah, and so I don't want you to render any judgment that we don't like the ramp, or it just, we cannot go forward until we get some assurances from the town that they're okay with it.
Right, if not, we'll build a ramp, I mean, we'll build a, um.
Yeah, of course.
You know, whatever, we'll build a lift, you know, that's not an issue.
And that's, that, just negotiate that with the town, lay out your decision tree as you put it, and, uh, you know, make it clear, and, you know, if you go with a lift, you'd probably be here in a week.
Exactly.
Okay, so.
What is the, what, I don't know who I should ask this of, but what is the purpose of the ramp?
I think it's twofold.
Okay.
One is to, I'll call it, supplement the stair that's being proposed, to get people from the train station down into downtown, into the site, that it really works hand-in-hand with that, to allow those who are handicapped to, who may not be able to use the stairs to get into the site.
And beyond, and beyond, yeah.
And also.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Secondarily, if you will, as Dan and Amy have mentioned, to provide handicapped access into the building, because right now, if you park in the handicap space, which is this space, if there's no ramp, you can't get into the building, so as Dan mentioned, the alternative for them would be a lift into that. The town wants there to be a handicap ramp, the town believes it's in the best interest to include one, we just have to work out the details.
All right, thank you.
I'd bet you Dallas Adonis, you built that ramp, nobody uses it anyway.
No, but that's.
Come on.
No, because the reason why is if you're handicapped, you could probably park up top and go into the upstairs restaurant, maybe you're handicapped.
Not in the municipal train station parking, with everyone from other towns parking.
Again, we, we're not gonna discuss, like, how often it's gonna be used, but, um, it's, again, the town is appreciative of it, so.
That's cool.
Of the concept, and, okay, so, let's continue, does anybody else wanna speak on this? Um, let's continue this the next week.
First item on the agenda.
Yes, yep, and, uh, if, just stay in touch with Jeremy, and if we have to push it to the next meeting, we will, we'll, we'll just continue it automatically, you won't have to show up, and, um, are we running into a time deadline yet? Before 11:00? No, we, we have more time.
I think we're okay, so, next week, 8:00 PM in this room.
Yep. Yes, certainly, come on up.
Just a quick question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'd like to introduce yourself.
Don't be, we're friendly, I promise.
Next week.
Richard Del Cetti.
By the way, Dan Dulcetti, by the way, it's a, it's a beautiful oak tree.
Okay.
I'm hopeful that you can have a combo, if it is a concrete, like, that a little section around the tree can be composite, but if the rest is concrete.
If we make it composite, we save the tree.
Okay. He doesn't want to.
Save the tree.
Can I make just one editorial comment?
Yes.
Take me a second.
Go ahead.
I would urge Mr. Del Cetti, or his representatives, but Mr. Del Cetti specifically, cause he's so charming, to sit down with Jeremy and find out, you said you don't know why they want concrete, well.
We've, we've tried.
We'll figure, you will, you will, you will get an answer, I promise you that.
Thank you.
I will help arrange the meeting if I need to be in sit-in, if I have to.
Yes.
Okay.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And I'm sorry about the last minute nature, I know how frustrating that might be, okay.
Number four on our agenda, proposed amendments to Darien zoning regulations, CSER 4-2019, site plan application number 305, special permit application number 306, flood damage application, prevention application number 393, Aquarian Water Company 31 Lake Drive, proposed to amend section 404F of the Darien zoning regulation to increase the, increase the maximum floor area of electric, electric transformer stations, telephone exchanges, and water sewer or natural gas pumping stations for facility from 300 square feet to 750 square feet, proposed to raise the existing well facilities, building, building on the site and construct a new expanded well facility building, redevelop the existing well, construct a new driveway, and perform related site development activities within a regulated area. The 3.25 acre subject property is located on the north side of Lake Drive, approximately 20.25 miles west from intersection with Point Street, and is shown on a sister's map, number 30, as lot number six in the R1/3 zone.
This is a little something different for the commission, uh, this is a property off of, which gets access off of Lake Drive, which is used by Aquarian Water Company for their wells, it's a, multiple parts to the application, as Kevin mentioned, one of the parts is amendment to the zoning regulations, uh, what they, what they have now is a principal use requiring a special permit, but they're looking to modify the regulations relative to the size of the buildings, and the applicants will discuss that zoning regulation amendment. In addition, you're looking at issues related to site plan, special permit, and the fact that some of the work is in the flood zone. So it's a little different than, uh, what you've seen before, but, uh, the applicants are here to walk you through and explain the different aspects of the request.
Thank you, my name is Carolyn Giampi, it's G.I.A.M.P.E., I'm the manager for Capital Project Delivery for Aquarian Water Company, I'm just gonna take up a minute of your time to tell you why we're here, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Rich Berlande, our consulting engineer, who will talk about all the technical aspects of the application. Uh, this facility has two structures currently, there is a public water supply well on the property with a registered diversion of just under half a million gallons a day, there's a treatment facility, uh, where we disinfect and add fluoride to the water, and then there's what we call finished water pumping, where the water is then, the finished water is then pumped to customers. Uh, this facility was built in the 1980s, it has not been significantly rehabilitated ever, uh, with the exception of, you know, the replacement of a piece of equipment inside the station, uh, and that sort of thing, it is time to do that, uh, we approach this project as we do most of our projects with a condition assessment and then an alternatives analysis, in this case, the age, condition, and capacity issues with the well, the pumps, the roof, the siding, the doors, the concrete, uh, all aspects of the facility, we feel merit complete replacement at this point, uh, so we have done all those evaluations, and I'll turn it over to Rich Berlande to talk you through the aspects of the application, thank you.
Thank you, Rich Berlande, uh, project engineer, I'm with AECom.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Sure, B.E.R.L.A.N.D.Y.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so we're here before you tonight for replacement of the existing buildings, um, one of the buildings, uh, is subsiding, um, and it's in very poor condition, the other building, which forms the clear well, there is a tank underneath, um, which we're retaining, um, and we're, the existing wood frame building over the top of that is in pretty sad shape, so our proposal is to take that building down too, and to reuse the foundation, and to combine the two buildings into one, one structure, um, which will allow us to have better operation and maintenance for that facility. Um, we're using about 0.282 acres of the 3.75 acre site, um, the remainder of the site will remain in its wooded and wetland condition with, with no, uh, no work being done there, um, we're placing the, existing power comes in, power and telephone comes into the facility overhead, we're proposing to go underground, and so by doing that, we'll have to replace the driveway, um, paving on the site will actually be slightly less square footage than existing, um, so that's what we're doing, as far as grading, uh, we're maintaining the existing elevation of the existing building, um, the grading will be minimal, um, pretty much matching what's there already. Um, one of the, uh, things we're here tonight is to discuss the flood aspects, um, and I have a copy. Here it is. This map is in, in the packet that we submitted to the town, um, this is derived from the FEMA map of the area, the, it just so happens that, um, the, there's a cross section, uh, in the FEMA map with an elevation of 48 feet as the 100-year flood elevation, our building is 43.8 feet, so we're about, uh, 1.8 feet above the 100-year flood elevation with our facility, in addition, the well casing is gonna be extended, um, all three feet above that, and all of the electrical equipment, um, will also be about three and a half feet off the floor, so we'll be quite a bit above the flood elevation.
It's really hard to see what you're talking about, can you point out the two different zones, cause it looks like they're two different zones, and then can you also point out where your property is, and you're gonna need to stand at the podium to do it, cause.
You can move, you can move the, you know, the.
Yeah.
The easel for your ease of talking, but we just need you near the mics.
It may be easiest to start with this map, cause that shows the property in relation to, what you're doing in relation to the 2.0 acres you're talking about.
Yeah, um.
You have that one?
This, I have that one, I, just so you can see, this little red dot here, that is the location of the property. Okay, so this, um, this blue line is, is about the limit on the property, um, the, the entire prop, we're, the entire property is within the flood zone, the, uh, the flood zone, but our particular parcel, uh, the buildings are elevated above that flood elevation, um, there is a floodway associated with the river, we're not in the floodway, uh, we're not doing any grading in the floodway, so we're not gonna have any impact. Um, the grading, the existing building is this portion of our new building, that front portion is the footprint of the existing building, and we are extending that rearwood, rearward from the existing building.
There's two buildings, so which existing building, that would be the, the one on the, uh, the right.
There is an existing building right here.
Yeah, okay.
That will be torn down and removed.
Yeah.
And then this southern portion, north is up on this, the southern portion of this yellow, um, block here is the existing building, and then our extension goes to the north.
Away from the surrounding neighbors?
Away from the neighbors, correct.
Okay, so the bill, the, the building footprints go from two buildings that are set east to west for, in general terms. for, in general terms.
Correct.
To one building that runs north to south.
Correct.
The size of that new building relative to the footprint of the two existing buildings is?
The existing buildings, one's about 290, the other's about 280, so it's about almost 500 square feet.
Yeah, or more.
Or a little bit more.
600 maybe.
Yeah, and our proposed building is 720 square feet. It's basically, the existing building is 18 feet wide.
Yeah.
So the proposed building's 18 feet wide by 40.
Oh, okay, so same profile as the, one of the existing buildings.
Yeah.
And set backwards, okay. You gonna show us an elevation?
Show you all kinds of things. This is the, the basic floor plan. From, from this point down is existing, and then we're adding on to the back of the building.
Okay.
Do these things make any noise?
The equipment that is there, we're just replacing the equipment in kind, so there'll be no additional noise from what already exists there.
But the new equipment's going to be state-of-the-art, the old equipment's 50 years old.
The new equipment will be, will have variable frequency drives, and we'll have much better control of it.
I'm not sure it's 50 years old because
It's been replaced.
...it's been replaced along the way, but still an improvement over what exists.
Right. So, and basically, this is the elevation of the building. This, let's see.
Yeah.
This elevation is the current elevation. It's, the door's staying in the same place, and then this would be the west elevation. So from, from about here over would be new, and similar on the other ones, the other elevations.
I'm sorry if I missed this, you might have mentioned it. What is the material change of the building? Is that going to be different in sound?
Right now, the existing building is vinyl siding. We're proposing to use a hardy board siding, which is a cedar. It'll look like a cedar building, but it's fiber cement, so it, it won't, it'll last a long time.
Maintain it.
So it'll look like shutters, like little, like cedar?
It'll look like a clapboard, like cedar clapboard in the building.
Okay, okay.
Gray is what we're proposing, gray with white trim. The roof is asphalt shingles, very high-quality asphalt shingles.
Dark, dark.
Dark, right.
Are you changing the lands, like are you cutting down trees and things?
Within the fenced area, there are some trees that are inside the current fenced area that we will be, will be removing, but outside of that, we'll retain all the trees. We're also planting screening along this entire border between the neighbors and, and the new facility.
Oh, you are, okay, great.
And on the west side of the property, that, that is just woodland, correct? Like, so where your new trees end?
This, this is all woodland.
Yeah, okay, so there's no need to wrap the, did I say west?
You said west.
Yeah, it's the east side, my bad. And so that whole east side is already screened with?
Yeah, it's about 600 feet of woods and land.
So there's no, there's no way you can even bend the screening trees around, because that's where the wood starts?
Correct.
Thank you.
Can you just indicate, please, the fenced area that you referred to before?
The fenced area, sure. It's basically, it's basically a square around, around the building.
It's kind of like, if you haven't been out there, it's kind of like a flaglot, if there's no better term.
The driveway?
Driveway right next to the residence on the right, and then there's a gate at the end, and that's where the fenced area is.
Just out of curiosity, what do you do when you lose power? Does, does it have a generator on site for the pumps?
No, this facility, the town of Darien is served by multiple water sources, so if this facility goes down, we don't, we just rely on the other water sources in town.
You got enough pressure coming from the towers, or wherever they're coming from?
I live like 200 yards from this house.
Yeah, I should mention that.
That's why I got a job, was all about water.
During construction, this facility would be offline for about a year.
Okay.
But the other, so there'll be no difference in water supply.
We're not going to go thirsty?
No. No, there's plenty of water from other sources, so.
Okay, and then there's a reg change element to this, Jeremy, if you want to just highlight that.
Yes, as Mr. Berlande mentioned, that right now, there's two separate buildings, and they're looking to make one building of 720 square feet, and section 404-F of the regulations now allows these types of facilities, provided the floor area shall not exceed 300 square feet, inside, it doesn't say inside, but that's what it means, and no yard or building shall be used for storage. So because they're going from two buildings, each a little less than 300 square feet, to one building of about 720 square feet, they propose to modify the zoning regulations to allow such larger buildings. It's just, I think you're changing one or two words in the regulations.
The number, we're changing the number.
Other, do you have any other facilities like this in town?
No.
So this is your only pump facility in town?
This is the only well, this is the only water supply in town.
This is unrelated, but this is where we have the aquifer protection commission? Is that true, this area?
They deal with, I think, further north?
Yeah, but this all pulls from that aquifer that you're?
This is the reason there's an aquifer.
Now, in other towns, do you have facilities that are 720 square feet?
We have facilities that are a lot larger in other towns.
And, and I guess the question, maybe to jump in on your question, is the reason you're consolidating the two buildings is, is just more efficient?
More efficient, yeah.
Is better, I mean, I'm just trying to get, get an understanding.
Right now, we have chemicals that are on top of someplace where they really shouldn't be.
Okay.
We're moving them off, off of that area, providing a separate room for the electrical equipment, which should be separated from the chemical feed equipment. It's just
Modernizing the facility.
Modernizing. We're meaning, we have already been to the Connecticut Department of Health, and they've approved our, our plans. They've also approved a change in, in land use, because it's water, it's water company land, so we have to get approval for them.
Okay.
So we've done that. The other thing is, is we kind of took an informal look at the other houses, buildings in the area, and we're about less than 45% of the square footage.
Of the average?
Of the average home in the area.
Floor, floor space, and it's one-story?
Right.
Okay.
The chemicals you're talking about is basically the fluoride?
Excuse me?
The chemicals you're talking about is basically the fluoride?
Fluoride, sodium hypochlorate, which is disinfectant, bleach.
Thank you. Those of us without chemical engineering degrees?
Yeah, it's basically bleach, and orthaphosphate, which is used for corrosion control, so we're protecting the water.
All approved by the various authorities?
Oh, yeah, all NSF 60 won't approve.
Yeah.
Approved by the health department.
Got it.
And the quantities that we bring, we're not changing, proposing any change in the output of the facility?
That's my next question.
It's approved, it has a diversion permit approved with the Department of Environmental Protection. We're not proposing to change that at all. The chemicals we're using, we're using basically five-gallon buckets, so it's very small quantities.
And how, and has it changed the maintenance requirements at the site at all? In terms of people coming to visit the site, checking it out, traffic?
No.
No, okay.
One or two trucks, one or two trucks a week, unless something happens.
Right.
And they'd have to be there more often, but other than that, no change.
So the amount of chemicals stored there is not changing, the amount of traffic going to the facility is not changing?
No.
You're just putting two buildings together?
It's basically a renovation project to bring, bring the facility into current codes.
Any other questions, guys, ladies?
No.
Anybody else from your team like to say anything? Okay. Anybody from the public like to comment? All right, come on up.
My name is Mike Thilmany, spelled T-H-I-L-M-A-N-Y. I'm the son of Hans and Tanya Thilmany, who are residents at 30 Lake Drive.
Okay, great.
Residents since, I think, 1965.
Awesome.
And it's been a very peaceable and a fine experience.
So their house is right to the right of the access drive?
It's just to the south, right. So their backyard looks at the southern aspect of the two buildings.
I do drive in, it's right on the right-hand side.
Yeah, I mean, the, all the driveways are parallel to each other. So we just had a few questions. We didn't submit any questions ahead of time.
Go ahead.
In no particular order. Again, this elevation was what we were furnished with, and so we didn't have a real good sense of where the additional footage is coming from. In other words, as a footprint, if you combine the two buildings, going to be appreciably extended in one way or another.
Okay, so maybe we'll have them answer each of your questions as you go, and then your parents can also, can you folks see those?
Maybe you can show them on the easel?
Sure.
Put the easel over here.
Well, close, really close to them, just, just so they, you can just turn it around, yeah, we don't need to see it.
Just probably setting up, just for reference, we did not send this to the Architecture Review Board for a number of reasons. One is, it's basically tucked away in the woods, and two, it's the size of a 720-square-foot shed.
Yeah.
So in this case, the commission will look at the elevation, the design, and the way out, but it's the short side facing the property.
All right, so can you guys just grab that black mic there, and then just, as he explains, we just have it on recording?
There you go.
Thank you, and that's all we're going to need. Thank you.
That is the existing driveway, which would be replaced just as it is.
So the building, really, the, actually, the elevations are wrong, because it says this, north elevation, doesn't it say so?
Now you're going to make me put on my glasses?
The north elevation is this one.
That's correct. That, that just means that's the west elevation.
This is incorrect, this is incorrect.
Yes.
Pretty of this is, that's incorrect, this is the thing we do.
Yeah.
So this whole piece of?
This elevation is what we do, you see from your back, from your backyard?
I won't see it, because we have trees and shrubs and bushes, and we insist that they stay as they are, that they are not removed or cut.
Right. And you said, you mentioned putting trees, or some, something to block out, what were, what were you talking about?
Yeah, we were, on the southern border, along, along this entire border, we're planting trees.
So this is behind the fence, right?
Right.
Do I understand you correctly, you are going to remove the existing ones?
We're going to
No. Plant new ones?
We're going to remove some of the trees inside the fence, the existing fence area.
Inside the fence.
Inside the fence area, right. And then we're going to replace the fence and put new trees on the inside of the fence.
Is this on our side of the fence, the new planting?
They're on the inside of the fence.
I see.
They're on the inside of the fence, and they're 12 to 14 behind.
Then is this the fence?
It's closer to the, that's, that's still fence. That's just the prevent, so I'm getting it going.
So you are removing the existing fence and putting one which is south of it, or at the same location?
Pretty much the same location as it is.
I see. And what happens to this driveway?
Well, we're putting, right now, there's power lines that go overhead to the facilities, the pole in the back there. There's overhead power lines. We're going to be putting those underground, so we have to dig up.
But the width of the drive as it is?
It'll stay the same, not changing.
But you said it's going to get more narrow, it's going to be less impervious surface, right?
There'll be less impervious surface because of what we're doing in our, in the site.
Within the site footprint.
Within the site, the driveway from the street to the best, basically, the flaglot will be the same as it is right now.
It's 12 feet wide, it's always going to be 12 feet.
Yes.
Except you're going to put the power lines under it and then repave it? Is that the, is that the goal? Okay.
And the elevations are labeled incorrectly, is that correct?
On one of the documents. Got it, nice catch.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. With regard to the fence, the fence now is old and rusted, you're replacing the whole fence?
That's correct.
Is it, is it going to be like green?
It's a PVC, PVC coated, black fence.
PVC coated, okay, but it's chain link PVC coated?
Right, the existing fence is chain link.
It's rusted brown.
Right.
The new one's going to be PVC black. Got it.
Any other questions? So you guys, okay?
No, really, I mean
I'm sorry you got to come up. It's for the record, it's
Yes, I understand.
If you could provide also your father's name for me?
Sure.
And then the lady that was speaking?
Sure, so my father, Hans Thilmany, T-H-I-L-M-A-N-Y. My wife, Meegan, M-E-E-G-A-N.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So I guess, sorry not to belabor it, but just to better understand the existing footprint, imagining the two buildings were one.
Yeah.
It would be essentially the same footprint, or are you turning?
Turn, yeah.
You're turning.
I get your question, so it would be north, it's going to run north, instead of east to west, it's going to run north to south?
If we're standing in your, in your parents' black backyard, we have one building on the, on the right.
Right.
One on the left, the one on the left disappears.
Okay.
And the one on the right, it just extends to the back.
Okay. So you put the, so when that disappears, it's basically going behind existing?
So actually, as you head towards Hoyt Street, you're likely to see, you're going to see less building?
If you're looking back.
No further?
And the, and the, just to be clear, and I asked this earlier, the new building's going to have the same width as the existing building on the, that's on the site, so you lose kind of the, the width, if you will, and it's going to create more depth, slightly bigger building, but
Right, heading towards the river.
Heading towards the river.
Heading towards Middlesex.
Actually, heading towards Middlesex, well, yeah.
Right, right. And the setback of the building relative to on the property, it's basically at the same spot?
We're using the same foundation, that's for that existing building.
I just wanted to ask on behalf of Meg Thilmany, thank you. They're concerned about the length of time that the, the project is going to take. You're saying a year?
It'll, it'll take pretty much a year.
Why, why does it take that long?
Just, there's some equipment that we have to order that takes a long time to get. In the spring, you know, from, you know, the spring, summer, fall, they'll be pretty active over the winter, because of the weather.
All right.
We won't be active, and then come the following spring, we'll be basically buttoning everything up and restoring the area.
All right, I think that
Planting.
Let me ask you a question a different way. There's 365 days in a year, 250 working days a year, how many days have guys been there swinging hammers?
Pardon?
I mean, how many working days, the period might be like a year, but how many working weeks?
Well, they'll be only working, you know, working seven to five, five days a week.
For how many weeks?
For, say, about 50 weeks.
Really?
Oh.
That's surprising.
That's a lot.
Rich, I think, I think what you mean, some work will be just interior, the exterior work consists of removing the existing structure.
Right.
Then doing the power lines, probably be early on as well.
Correct.
The driveway will be done last, the replacement of the driveway will be done last, and then adding on to this structure, the exterior won't take long at all, but there will be interior work, so it will look like it's done, but you're going to be working on the interior, and then the driveway will be one of the last things you do in probably about a year from now. You're not going to get started, this is May, you might not get started till July or August, and you'll probably finish in about next May. But a lot of the work will be interior, and there's not a lot of
To Steve's point, it's not five days a week, seven to five.
It's not, not non-stop construction, there's very little construction, actually.
It's got to be electricians inside hooking up pumps and generators, and nobody's going to know if they're doing it or not.
There's a very little site, site work.
Right.
But most of the work is inside, correct? There's a lot of piping, chemical pumps. Once we get the bu, the building buttoned up, and, you know, you'll do the siding and roofing, that'll get closed up, and then all the other work will be inside.
I think, I think the, the idea of a year of construction, in our minds, means you're going to have cranes and backhoes in there for a year.
No, right.
You're mostly doing some remodeling and replacement of equipment. You're mostly doing some remodeling and replacement of equipment inside, right? They're going to be burying those power lines, and then you're going to be doing remodeling in the building.
Correct.
But it has to be phased, which is essentially why it's going to take a year for the whole project to end.
With plant and CO.
Will that be active construction for a year? Obviously not.
Yeah. And then there's some equipment that, you know, it's going to take us 12 to 14 weeks to get.
Right, that's fine. It'll take you two days to put a dam.
Exactly.
All right, so just to be clear, this summer, you will be doing what?
This summer...
Will there be equipment in there, taking down the old building?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll have, we'll be taking down the old building, we'll be doing the foundation for the addition to the back of the building. And then we'll probably be getting the walls up and the roof on and getting it closed in.
Working on the trench for the electricity.
Yeah, in the trench for the electricity.
So you would think like four months?
Yeah, that'd get us into October, November. We should be buttoned up by then.
Okay.
We will have, just so the commission and you know, we will have somebody from AECom onsite every day. If there's, you have any questions, or something you don't like that's going on, let us know.
Well, and the planning and zoning department will have a number probably that you can call and plug your comments, questions, all that good stuff.
All right.
Anybody else?
Is the old foundation coming out?
The existing, yeah, from the...
Chopped up and taken away?
Yeah, it's going to be removed from the site. Any other comments?
Excuse me, I have two comments.
Oh, could you bring in the microphone?
We show here an ideal condition with a circle at the intersection of Lake River, and the water comes from there. And there's a very big pipe through here, and we don't want you to touch it.
We won't help you. It's shown right here. It's shown right there on the map.
I see, okay.
So we're not finding that thing yet. Just make sure Jeremy knows we're finding it without him.
I think it's not anywhere close.
It's a few feet off the driveway.
Well, we're just digging it up. Digging a hole there to check the piping, and then we're going to back...
I didn't hear the full one.
Right here, we're checking on a pipe that might exist there. We have to make sure that it gets capped. So we're digging it up...
Oh, you mean, we don't know if there is one?
Yeah.
And if there is one, you are going to cap it?
Correct. And then we're going to bury it. All right. Any other comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion to lose this public hearing?
Some move.
Take a second.
All second.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you for all your questions and comments, and if you have any follow-ups, Jeremy will assist, and we'll probably be deliberating this in a couple of weeks. Ready, Cap?
Administration, section number 339, number 1-2019, Joe Pagliarulo, 40 Swiss Lane.
Talks about one acre construction.
Keep going, keep going.
Proposal to create a rear building lot associated with the division of the 2.17 subject property under the First Division Section of the Connecticut General Statutes and construct a new shared driveway. The two proposed lots under section 339 of the Darien zoning regulations have less than the required lot width at the frontage of Swiss Lane. The subject property is located at the southern terminus of Swiss Lane, approximately 1,300 square, 1,300 feet feet southeast of its intersection with Mingsen Road, and is shown on social stat number 50 as lot number 881 R1 zone.
So Jeremy, you want to walk us through an introduction to this, please?
Sure. As a brief introduction, this is a request under section 339 of the regulations, which is basically creating a rear lot, which is a lot that doesn't have enough frontage. The one and two acre zones in town allow rear lots, and so they're looking, they need P&amp;Z approval to establish such under section 339. Jeff McDougal surveyors here to talk a little bit about establishing a lot. They're not going to be talking about any development, that would be a subsequent application, but they're here to talk about the establishment of the rear lot. Correct?
Correct. Jeff McDougal from Williams Seymour and Associates, representing Joseph Pagliarulo on this application. As Jeremy indicated, what we are proposing is to divide this property into two lots. This property is eligible for what is called the First Division under section 818 of the Connecticut General Statutes. By definition, subdivision is technically the division of a piece of property into three or more lots for sale, or it would be a re-subdivision if we were dividing this lot into two lots if it had previously been divided under the Darien subdivision regulations. It has existed well before the subdivision regulations.
All right, so let me just stop you there for a clarification. So they don't get a free cut?
Well, they would, if, to get a free cut, you have to comply with the regulations in their entirety. Here, the fact that they're creating a rear lot, they need P&amp;Z approval for the rear lot. If they had enough frontage, you could see the frontage is very limited, it's just on Swiss Lane. The free cut, they could just slice it down the middle and create the subdivision, but they're here tonight because of the very limited frontage which now exists on Swiss Lane.
Thank you for that clarification.
Right. There are other properties that we have done this on in town. I do have a couple of examples, one on Mansfield Avenue, and I believe it was one on Inwood Road that I can show. It's very similar to what we are doing here. Just to get started on it, we do have an aerial showing the property and its relationship to the surrounding residences. This residence was completely reconstructed. The Wests have completely rebuilt this house. This was a 2016 aerial. It's now all finished and complete. This shows, these green areas here are the proposed rough footprints. They're conceptual footprints for the proposed house. This yellow is the existing house. This yellow up here is an existing barn, is an existing shed here. Most of the new construction falls within the currently developed area of the property.
Before you flip, just give us the relative size of the conceptual dwelling units that you kind of outlined there.
I believe, well, I think you could see them better on here.
That's the best, is it yours?
It's the best.
So, you know, we're just looking at houses that are... Joe, would you have an idea of the footprint size on each house?
The smaller footprint would be about...
You want to come up and give some of those numbers? I mean, these are conceptual.
I understand. I'm just trying to get a conceptual idea of what the concept is, okay? Totally understand. We've been through this rodeo before.
Yep. Joe Pagliarulo, the owner of the property. The smaller footprint here would be around 1,800 square feet.
That's just one story, of course, just the footprint.
The footprint, exactly. Around 1,800 square feet, maybe a little bit more. The larger home would probably be around 2,500 square feet.
Okay.
In the footprint.
And the existing home is currently what footprint?
The existing home, the footprint is probably around, probably around 4,000 square feet.
It's a one and a half story house. It's a historic house.
Yes.
It's 100 years old?
It's 300.
300? You're taking out a 300-year-old house?
We have it on the market, and there's, we've dropped the price precipitously, and there's, nobody wants it.
I know, nice broker. And how old's the barn?
We moved the barn there. It was a vintage barn from the 18th century that we brought to the property ourselves.
So you like found it and rebuilt it on site?
We disassembled it and then reassembled.
But the entire house is not original. I mean, there were additions to it, so the original...
There weren't many 300-year-old houses that size. We get it.
Not too many of those are original. So what we are doing here is, we are showing this proposed driveway, which is basically an extension of the road. And under the subdivision regulations, they have what's called a hammerhead turnaround, which does allow for vehicles to turn around without having to put a large circular turnaround in there. So this turnaround will serve two purposes. It will divide into the two driveways, and these will be grass paver areas that will look like lawn, but they will be able to support trucks and all. And if you've been down here and you look at trying to turn around at the end of this, I've been there and seen a flatbed, a lowboy truck trying to turn around, and he must have done about a 40-point turn trying to get out in there. It was difficult. So this is going to make it a lot easier for the trucks to make this turn in here and delivery vehicles and all, and, you know...
That doesn't exist right now.
No, that does not exist, but that will be part of this...
And is that, that's required if you were to subdivide the property, that turnaround area? I'm just trying to understand.
It really isn't because we are not a subdivision. It's a little confusing, being a first cut.
First cut, I'm sorry, yeah.
We are complying with all of the regulations with regards to the bulk of the properties. We, the 150-foot square fits on both properties. This development that we are conceptually showing here is really pushed far away from Gorham's Pond. We're honoring the 100-foot cam review area and inland, wetland, upperland review area. So this development is all pushed about as far as you can get it away from the pond and all, being very conscientious with the development and, you know, the area of Gorham's Pond. This area below this wall here, that's all a treat area that's going to remain. When you look at this property from Goodwise River Road, you really don't even see much here. You know, if you go onto Google Earth and you go to the street view and you try to look across, you won't really see this house much at all. It's quite protected.
The grade change behind the subdivided, it's not a subdivision, what's the...
First cut.
First cut, if it's first, first cut on the left. There's a grade change, yeah.
It's right behind the house.
Right behind the house.
What are we talking about?
Grade change.
Where your finger is. Shows proposed contours.
The contours, yeah.
Oh, these contours here, yes. Those are, that's part of the conceptual plan, and we believe that that will be necessary for the construction of these houses.
So what's, what is the contours? I can't see it.
Those are one-foot contours.
Okay, so going from what?
We are going from elevation 12 up to 18.
Okay, so six-foot kind of over...
Yeah.
What is that, over about 50 feet or something like that?
Yeah, that's probably just about 35.
I'm just trying to figure out where they're going to put the pool.
Yeah. It's, yeah, you're not putting a pool on that one.
You want to certify to that?
Sure.
Let me ask you a question. We need a text box, I mean, a zoning box in this, Jeremy? I always get a zoning box on my subdivision plans.
Certainly the commission could require that.
Yeah.
What was the question?
The zoning box.
Oh, zoning chart, well, a zoning chart for what, I guess, would be the question?
Percentage lot coverage. Percent lot coverage?
Oh, these are well under the 20% and all, but they're, but it's conceptual, we're not...
I fully get, what I'm envisioning is that you're, right now, you're staying out of the 100-foot line, right?
The cam.
The cam line, that's why your one on the left is so cockamamie. You didn't do a building footprint on here of what it could be when you designed this other house? And it's, that house to me makes no sense, so I'd like to see what the percentage coverage is. I mean, I've asked this 50 times on subdivision maps.
This is about the maximum footprint that you could put on that lot. These purple lines here are the building setbacks.
Oh.
Except for this is the 100-foot cam line.
So a developer could come in and ask to encroach on a cam line if they...
They could.
But that would be the commission's prerogative whether or not to grant it.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. And any development on these properties has to go before you for flood damage prevention, cam review, has to go to EPC, has to go before you for the landfilling and regrading. Yeah, they're definitely going to be subject to that. This is a very unusual configuration here, and we went over this with staff a few times.
Yeah.
And it's because of the way these lots, one is behind the other, that's why you've got this 90-foot setback here, 40-foot off of here, because this buildable area is behind the buildable area on this lot, if you consider this the front lot and that the rear lot.
So at some point...
The zoning box.
Yeah. And I think I'm in agreement that you just want some conceptual zoning box, and then the other thing...
We can do that.
It seems like, it seems like at some point, you know, the future builder, if you will, might want to go to ZBA and see what they can do, given the shape of that.
Well, I, if anyone was going to build there, I don't think it would be a ZBA issue. I would think it would be a planning and zoning.
Because you think it's coming this way?
Yeah, yeah. You know, which, you know, this is not a setback line, it is a regulated area.
Right, same on the other lot.
We're not prohibited from developing in there. If you can prove that that development will have no adverse impacts on the coastal resources and the environment.
So ironically, I think what you're saying, Jeff, is that the building envelope on the left, actually, they have more flexibility than the one on the right because the purple line is the cam line.
Correct.
Whereas on the right, the purple line is...
Is the setback line.
Is the building envelope.
Yeah.
So the one on the right, they will probably, depending on what they do, they might get more house, but it would become a little trickier to add a shed or whatever, because that envelope, you have that 90-foot...
Correct, correct. This is, this is, this is the setback. You know, so they do have this area in here that you could put a pool, a small pool or something in, you know, which would be behind the setback and clear of the upperland review area and all. So, you know, it does have some ability. This one is the one that, like Jeremy said...
You have more flexibility, but it's likely to come back to the commission to be in the cam area.
Right, so we're being asked to approve something that we're going to see again probably twice.
Preferably once. I think that is what I spoke to Joe about, is, whether Joe builds it or someone else, is the commission doesn't want to see the house first, and then six months later, the pool, and six months later, the tennis court.
Going with it all.
Is, they would prefer it, so...
Okay, and staffs, I mean, this is administrative review, so we have to assure that the criteria that they outlined on the first cut, you know, appears to our subdivision...
Section 339 in terms of having the frontage, that they presented information to show that it all works to establish the rear lot here.
So the only thing we're missing, I guess, is Steve's text box or zoning box?
And the question is, do you want that as a condition of approval, or do you want...
Keep it open.
I'd like to keep it open and see it.
Okay. All right, so we'll just, uh, we'll put you on very-
I think it would be a condition of approval on design, sorry to-
All right.
Are we delivering on this?
No, we're not delivering. We're, we're deciding whether or not to keep it open based on, uh, Steve's desire to have a zoning box.
That we ask for every single map, but it's required on the dark.
So, thoughts?
I don't, I don't know about that.
You want to keep it open? Okay. You want to keep it open?
No, I mean, I don't know about the, the zoning box, but I have a question about the variance, very specific to variance again. Can you just go through? It's because of the very small frontage on this Swift Lane. I've actually been there a lot because I know someone who's in Swift Lane.
Well, it wouldn't be a variance. This is the request to establish a rear lot.
Right.
Kind of a house behind a house. In this case, as Mr. McDougal's explained, is that it's kind of odd, but the house behind the house, the, the lot to the, I'll call it the east or the north, actually, northeast?
Yes, northeast.
Is the rear lot. Uh, so in this case, the front lot is the left, the rear lot is, is the right. They each have 50 feet of frontage off Swift. The left lot has it coming off the south, the rear lot has it coming off the east.
Basically, the way the regulation reads is any lot which has less than the required lot width at the street line is subject to section 339.
So-
Oh, so it's subject to 339 because of that?
Because they're reestablish-
It's not both fronting one street, okay.
They would get a free cut if it wasn't for that, basically.
Right, they wouldn't, they, they wouldn't be here.
Right, right.
It, it would, it would be very much like some of these other ones that we've done. This was one on Mansfield Avenue. This was a first cut. This was an accessway that went in. This is what was submitted. This is a filed map on the land records. This is, you know, the, very similar. You know, you've got a rear lot, you've got the 90 foot, the, the, the larger setback here. This isn't in our one zone. Yeah, I think, uh, yeah, so this, this one, this one was one that we did and then there was another one over on Inwood Road, which was, you know, very similar.
Oh, yes.
Two lots created.
Why do you say that?
Remember that one?
We just had that file open the other day.
Oh, yeah. Inside Joe?
Yep.
Okay.
None of these had to do with the 100 foot upland review area. Mansfield Lane does not have to do with the 100 foot upland review area.
It doesn't matter on your ability to subdivide the lot, though.
It's developed the law.
We're just talking about, we're just talking about the, the first cut, the first division of a piece of property and the fact that if you can divide the property and comply with the zoning regulations, it, it complies.
Okay, so we're going to, since it's that we're going to keep this open next week, uh, can you get that done by next week?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, we'll put you on post two. I know, this should be a quick one. Is that okay?
Whoever you want first, whether you want squabbling.
Oh, whatever, yeah, well, this should be really quick. Yeah, don't, yeah, make it, we'll figure it out. You'll be early in the, in the schedule next week.
It would be next Tuesday, May 14th in this room.
And seeing nobody out there for public comment, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, we'll continue. No, we're going to continue. Uh, we don't need the motion, so, thank you.
Okay.
See you next week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Another one?
General meeting, uh, deliberations and possible discussion regarding the last one regarding application of report to decrease Jason Parker 28 Port Press Avenue, for the regrade rear yard and construct new stone retaining wall and create a level yard reform related site development activities here and was closed on 4/23/2019.
Anybody have any comments? These were very straightforward.
Yeah, very straightforward.
Anybody else? Okay, so, uh, can I get a motion to approve as submitted?
Motion to approve is submitted.
Your second. Mr. Rand, all in favor? Thank you.
Flood damage prevention application number 394, David and Jill Rowe, two fault displaced, propose to install a post and rail fence with turkey wire attached within the rear yard to close the property and perform the latest and next regulation area. Hearing closed on 4/23/19.
Uh, ditto, the first one, pretty straightforward. There weren't any, um, as I remember, any issues.
Agree.
Only I couldn't find it.
I, I liked it, I didn't know that.
I couldn't find it on the street.
That's right, that's right.
All right, motion to approve as submitted?
Second.
Mr. Levine, second, all in favor? Great.
Two minutes, April 11, 2019, April 23, 2019.
Uh, so we all were here and I didn't see any typos or anything, but I can't tell you.
I skipped it, good.
Yawn, sorry.
You're going to, you're going to create an epidemic of yawns. Uh, anybody else have any no comments or?
None.
All right, uh, motion to approve. Can I get a motion to approve as submitted? Mr. Rand?
Second.
Ms. Leahy, all in favor?
Five zero, it's, uh, just a bit.
Sorry, I'm here.
So we're not going to deliberate just because I, one, I told-
Did you want to get the 4/23 minute?
Oh, did I miss?
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Proposal to, to approve 4/23 minutes.
Okay, anybody see anything on the 4/23 minutes?
No.
No.
Well, I certainly didn't see it, but I could have had some mark. Uh, okay, motion to approve as submitted?
Motion.
All in favor? Uh, sorry, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, great. It was my agenda, that's why. Uh, you got anything, project status that you need to, uh, we're going to skip deliberations tonight just because, one, I told everybody it happened next week or later and two-
Project status, I expect, uh, Old Town Hall Homes to get started, uh, later this month.
Foundation date?
With the foundation. We're still working out some minor details, but generally I was expecting this, get out there and start working within the next few weeks.
Okay, and then the calendar, just remind us.
Uh, we meet next week, next week.
I am out.
And Kevin's out and Liz is out, so we really need everyone else here, which is May 14th.
Um, and, and along those lines, um, we're going to be deliberating, uh, the reg changes and one of that being the municipal use zone, correct?
Next week.
Oh, I'm sorry, not deliberate, the public hearing's still open, but we might, if we have any extra time, go to deliberations. But if you guys have any comments that you want to share with Jeremy, uh, share with the commission, please send them to Jeremy and then he can circulate them at the appropriate time. Just in case we get going with deliberations, is that okay? Okay.
So it'll be a public hearing on the map changes, uh, the MU zone, two squab lane and 40 Swift Lane, general meeting deliberations. We are at this point-
Oh, so it's, it's not that heavy of an agenda then?
Well, it really depends on those, uh, zone map, zone regulation, MU. That could take 45 minutes.
Okay. But not, not a lot of public hearings other than that?
No, no, and just the two tonight should be pretty quick.
Do we want to deliberate 40, um, Swift Lane? No, no, not 40 Swift Lane, the Lake Drive one?
Yeah.
Lake Drive.
Oh, right now?
Yeah.
Up to yes.
All right.
I agree.
Fine by me.
All right. All right, we're going to back up the agenda tonight, the Lake Drive, uh, so go ahead since you called it.
I, I, I think the way they designed the plan is, is fine. They told us everything they're replacing. It's, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
The zoning change to go from-
Very necessary at age, yes.
The zoning change to go from 300 square feet to 720 or 750, what do they make of it?
Correct, I think it's 750 is where we left off. I can't remember.
It's in there.
They're building 720, so they need a little bit of-
750.
I think 750 is where.
I think that's fine, too.
I agree.
That's going to apply to everybody, though.
Yes.
Comfortable without applying to everybody.
The energy, but, so who would use it? Just a utility?
I don't think there's-
Eversource maybe or?
There might be a couple of these in town, but not too many.
But like, if, if Eversource wanted to put in some kind of gas building, they could do it there, right?
There might be a sewer building in town. There might be an Eversource building or two in, in town or-
But it's 700s.
Size of sheds, sheds back here, garage.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'm good to go.
Okay.
All right, so you'll maybe draw-
We'll see what we can get for next week. Keep in mind, the zone reg needs four affirmative votes and there's only going to be four of you here next week.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's the only way we can deliberate on, right?
Okay.
Because everything else is left open. Well, for the high school.
High school wasn't, but I told everybody we're doing it next week.
So next week, four of you will be here. The week after, right now, we're off. I know, John, you had talked about the possibility of a special meeting that week. We'll kind of-
I don't think we're going to need it, though, yeah.
Okay, and then the 28th is a very full public hearing night, uh-
Anything, uh, so the, that's the Leroy West Pemberton 16 gets kicked off?
Leroy West, uh, which other ones, Fred? We had, uh, one Tokenik Beach Drive, which is now before the ZBA, so if it doesn't get through the ZBA, it won't get here. We have, uh, one that was withdrawn. You won't have to worry about that.
Possibly Chris No.
Two 42 All Kings Highway and a couple others, but it's a full night.
Okay.
Just the 21st is canceled. There's no meeting on the 21st.
There's no meeting on the 21st.
And then the next one, 5/28?
5/28.
Okay.
And then, uh, we might be-
Right after Memorial Day.
I know John Louie's just wanted to meet with us in executive session in late May.
Okay.
So we might have to find a date or it could be the first week of June.
Okay, so 5/14, 5/28 and then, uh-
June 4th, I think, is the one after that, but we'll have to find a date for that executive session to talk about pending litigation.
Okay, great. Anything else? You, you were going to give us a report at some point with, uh, on a blight.
That's a good, uh, so-
You don't have to do it now.
No, no, I'm just saying that, uh, next, is it, it's tomorrow. So tomorrow is a kind of key meeting.
Okay.
So I will, I will work with Jeremy to put an-
So you're not here the 14th, uh, maybe the 28th or the, the 4th or something? Okay, cool. Thanks. I'm interested to hear it.
Cool.
Uh, all right. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Somebody down there, guys.
Thank you, TV 79, we're off. Bonnie, we're off.